Seventh meeting of the Wareham School Committee. If you just start with the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, a nation under God indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and if you'll just bear with me, I'm gonna walk inside here. I'm just gonna.
Interesting noises, huh?
All right. Everyone hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Welcome again to the May 7th, 2020, meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Just some quick little reminders. This is a remote meeting, so everything will be roll call votes. I do have a dog, so you might hear him bark if you do, or try to mute. If I happen to drop off for any reason, the vice chair, Ms. Rossi, will have the meeting. And if we both drop off, then it would be Ms. Becky Lucky. And with that, I think we need a roll call, just to see who's here. So I'm just going to, of school members, just have a forum. So I guess I'll begin first, myself, Ms. Flaherty here, Ms. Becky Lucky.
Yeah.
Ms. Okay, Ms. Rossi.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Morgan.
Yeah.
Ms. Spear. Okay, so we are, all school committees are here, in addition to Dr. Shaverhood Superintendent, Dr. Schwarm, Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Ruiz, Recording Secretary, and Student Rep, Ms. Virge. So with that, I don't have it on the agenda to do good news, but if you still mind, I'd like to put it out there to have some good news. With that, Ms. Becky, did you want to share?
Yes, I did. So yesterday, I happened to leave my office around lunchtime, and I drove by Deacon School, and my timing was good because they were doing the Guess Who event, the drive up event at Deacon School. So they had some staff out, and they were all in mask or in costume, and the kids were gonna pull up and have to guess who the staff members were. It was really cute. They did a really good job. They were giving out clues, asking, you know, who was who, which staff members were who. And so it was really fun. I happened to get there right at the beginning, and I'm sure it was very popular. And it was kind of a dry run, I guess, for next week, when they're gonna have a much bigger version with many more staff members there, teachers and staff. So good for them. It was really, really cute. Yeah.
Ms. Rossi, so you have some good news. Go for it.
I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to the boosters and the athletic department. They're doing a really great job on their Facebook presence, highlighting the senior athletes for each sport going into and up until what would have been graduation. A single highlight for each student, which has been really, really nice to see that those kids are being recognized.
Yeah, I saw that too. They are doing a really good job. I agree. Anyone else? Oh, Ms. Morgan, go ahead.
I just want to say that this week is teacher appreciation. Hi, I just want to say that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I want to give a big shout out to our teachers, because they're doing an awesome job during this very difficult time.
Absolutely. Excuse me. Dr. Schwarm.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that what's really been great is the students, because it's Teacher Appreciation Week, the student council members of the middle school are doing videos every day. Each student council member is taking their time, and they're doing these videos thanking their teachers, and they are completely adorable and how they're going about doing it. It's very sweet.
I saw the one today that had the cards, the cue cards. Sorry. Yeah, I was just saying, the video from the middle school with the cue cards, that was really cute today. Yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, no, and the, on the topic of teacher appreciation, it's, it's heartwarming. It's, that's not even a good word for it. But, so my son's a senior, and it's, you know, we get acceptance letters. It really brings it home, you know, the combination of what got us here, you know, to be accepted to five of the six schools that he applied for, and to contribute the teachers along the way that made that happen. It was, it really gets you choked up, because it really made me think back to the beginning, you know, right down to kindergarten, and the opportunities that Wareham has made possible for him on the way, and he'll be going to assumption. But he was accepted to top-notch schools and was made possible here, and I really appreciate that from the teacher. Anyone else with more good news? Okay, onto the minutes of the meeting.
Emily has her hand raised.
Go ahead. Good, good, Virge.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I just want to share that, like, after-school activities and stuff, in addition to regular school, is actually staying pretty active, which is great. The clubs that I'm in, such as like Mollie UN and Key Club, they hold meetings on Zoom. We had a meeting today for Key Club, which was pretty efficient, actually, surprisingly. For sports that I do, there are being workouts that are sent out, even though we can't have the season, just if we wanna, you know, keep with it. And student council is planning something to live in the spirits at the high school. So things are still moving, even though we're in quarantine. So that's good.
Thank you for that. Any more good news before we move on to the minutes? Kito. So minutes of the meeting, April 23rd, 2020, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
That was Ms. Rossi, second.
Second.
Ms. Becky Lucky seconded. Any further discussion on the minutes? Oh, seeing none. I'll take a roll call. Ms. Spear.
Yeah.
Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
Ms. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Becky Lucky.
Yes.
A little delayed tonight, I guess. So it's, they're accepted unanimously, 5-0-0. Onto the report of the student, report of the Director of Student Services, Mrs. Fay. Is she in the queue here?
Her husband is, has been ill, and so she's been dealing with him. She said she could get on now, but she did not. She just got home. So, yeah.
We could, we could do it next meeting if you want.
Okay, yeah, that might be easier, because it's been a pretty long day for her.
Sure, yeah. I hope everything's okay there. Okay. Moving forward, next item, Approval of Student Opportunity Act Plan, Dr. Schwarm.
Yeah, it's really back on you, so I'm gonna hit the ball back at the school committee. I just need a vote of approval. The plan has been done now for months, I think. Everybody has seen it, I believe. I've sent it out, I don't know how many times, with the PowerPoint and presentation. I've received no feedback, just all okay. So I'm assuming that it's okay with all of you, and I need the votes so that I can submit it to the Department of Ed, because it was due yesterday.
Okay, so with that, do we have a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act Plan as presented by Dr. Schwarm? Anyone?
So moved.
No. So, so we gotta, it was moved by Ms. Becky Lucky and seconded by Ms. Rossi. So with that, any further discussion? I just want to thank you for, oh, go ahead, Ms. Becky Lucky.
I just was curious if you've gotten any feedback, you know, with the budget situation that the state will be in. Have you got any feedback about whether or not this will all be for naught, or?
It may be all beef or not. We're not really sure. Of course, this is all done before the crisis, and so now we wait. But I think what we'll do is submit them as we, as they planned, because now there's a law connected to them, which is this plan, right? There's a plan, there's a law, this plan, every district. So we're just gonna follow through. I don't know that there'll be any money, to be honest. I'm not sure how they're gonna manage it under the circumstance. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and nevertheless, I just wanted to thank you for your work on that. That is a very understandable packet, and I do hope we can get some money for our parish, for mine. Anyone else have any comments or questions about this? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a vote to approve. I'll go, Ms. Spear.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
Ms. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Rossi. Okay. Ms. Becky Lucky.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, 5-0-0. That's, okay. So I was gonna move on to the next agenda item, but I see that Mrs. Fay has arrived. Now, now, we don't mind pushing this the next meeting, if you prefer, if that's what you want to do. It's a. Oh, we can't hear you. I don't know what's going on.
No, it doesn't even say she's muted.
Yeah, she's not muted, but we can hear. Hold on, I think maybe, maybe Steve has to do something. I saw Michelle run out the screen. Any luck, Michelle?
Come in again. You need to unmute it.
Done.
This is like my everyday life here.
No. If you wanted, if you want to just hang on, we'll just go to the next, the next item, and maybe, maybe something will get fixed. All right, so. Huh? Okay, we're onto the approval of the District Handbook, 2020 to 2021. Doing that one.
Yes, you received a copy of the District Handbook, and the changes that have been listed in the handbook are just to update the dates of the policies and a change in the phone number. So I would ask the committee, if you have any questions, be happy to answer it. Other than that, I'd ask you to please approve the District Handbook.
Any questions or comments? None? I'll just say that I was really surprised. I was really surprised that there was so few changes, and it's a big, it's a big document. I guess that's a good thing. But I guess with that, I guess we'll take a motion to approve the District Handbook. Anyone?
So moved.
So I see Ms. Becky Lucky moved, and leave a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Morgan seconded. With that, I'll take any further discussion, seeing none. I'll call Ms. Becky Lucky.
Yes.
Ms. Spear. Ms. Rossi.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
Okay, passed this 5-0-0, unanimous. Okay, Ms. Officer on the chat window, I think Steve logged out, and I logged back in again and tried that. Okay. So we're gonna move on, though. It's a request to increase hourly wage of cafeteria workers and bus drivers during COVID-19. Dr. Shaverhood.
Yes, thank you. We feel very fortunate that we're in the position to feed as many students as we have, and that's all due to our outstanding employees, our cafeteria managers, bus drivers, Mike Rousseau, and with assistance from Jamie Andrews. So I just want to give my thanks to them because of their hard work. It certainly has been beneficial to our students. As of today, we've delivered 84,070 meals. Tomorrow, we will deliver three days' worth of meals to our students, so we will more than likely be over 90,000 meals that we've delivered since this has started. The reimbursement that we're receiving from the state has changed, and so it's now under the Summer Food Program, which is higher than normally under the National Food Program, and therefore, we have been bringing in some extra money. We would like to pass on to the employees, who are very grateful for their hard work, and with them working through these times, that I would recommend that we provide to all cafeteria employees, and the managers, and the bus drivers. There'd be 33 employees total, $2 more an hour. This would only be paid during the COVID period, and once we go back to the regular meal planning, then they would go back to their regular salary. This would be absorbed completely by the lunch program. It would not touch the LEA, and the approximate cost to provide the 33 employees, the additional $2 an hour, would be approximately $2,000 a week. And again, that's for fully covered through our reimbursement that we're receiving. So I would ask the committee to please vote to provide the $2 additional per hour during this time.
All right, thank you. That is, we are very fortunate, anyway you cut it, to have that added revenue. And Ms. Rossi, go ahead.
So as much as I appreciate all the hard work that the bus drivers and the cafeteria workers are putting in, does this $2 go to every bus driver and every cafeteria worker, including those that are not doing the lunch stops? As I'm aware, there's only, I believe, six or seven stops. So the total number of bus drivers employed by the district wouldn't be affected by this. Am I correct?
It would, it would only go to the people that are working during this time, and there are 14 drivers that are working, because every bus has two drivers on the bus.
Why?
Is there? Sorry, is there, there was no sort of rotating system to get all of the drivers that are employed by the district? It turns with doing this, or are they the same set drivers at every location?
It's the same set drivers because of the contract.
So the, all the rest of the drivers that are in the union, they would not be receiving the additional funding? Is that, is it only for those that are actually at the physical sites, accepting or dishing out the lunch program? That's what this is for?
Yes, it's just for the drivers that are actually working during this period.
And did this proposal come from the state to ask to give them additional funding? Did this come from the drivers, or did this come from the cafeteria workers?
It came from a mixture of people. It came from the Director of Food Service, and it also came from the association, their union.
My only other question would be, we have a lot of teachers and administrators and paraprofessionals that are doing extra work and working extra hours to get work accepted in and accepting work up until midnight, some nights, for the students, and no one from that side has proposed additional monies for, for those workers. And I'm just curious why one group would be able to accept a raise or ask for a raise when none of the other people that are working during this pandemic have been granted or asked for additional money?
Well, the food service is a different set of money. It's not the LEA. And so this money does not touch the LEA, where the salaries of our teachers and our paraprofessionals do. And we have not received any additional funds from the state, whereas with the food service, we have been receiving some additional funds because of the way the government is qualifying this program. And so it would not do anything to the LEA to keep it. And the fact that our cafeteria workers and bus drivers have been in five days a week since this has started, it just seemed to make sense to pass it on to them, because we are certainly very grateful that they've continued to work and that they've put out the number of meals they have for our students.
No, no, Ms. Morgan, I see you, but just to clarify, Dr. Shaverhood, so maybe educate people that are listening. So, yeah, the cafeteria workers, they don't show up at all in our, in our monthly budget, because they're totally funded on their revolver, correct?
That's correct.
Right, and so, and so this part of money, I'm assuming. Go ahead.
The bus drivers do show up on the LEA side. However, this money is, this money that would be the $2 extra an hour is coming from the food service and is not touching the LEA.
Right, and that's because they're supporting the cafeteria workers, and you know, that's all, it's all usable in that sense, right?
Correct.
Okay, and Ms. Morgan, go ahead.
So two questions. One was, I heard that there were two bus drivers on the bus. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can I ask why?
Sure, because the bus drivers are loading and unloading pretty heavy coolers. It takes two of them to help distribute, and so we would not send anyone out to hand out the meals by themselves. And it's also, it's virtually impossible for one driver to do this by themselves. I mean.
Is there a reason we weren't?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but is there a reason that we aren't using monitors?
Because according to the contract, it's bus drivers.
Okay, all right, then my, my other question is, so, so are the other bus drivers and cafeteria workers who aren't doing this getting paid?
Bus drivers, no. Cafeteria workers, if they choose to work, yes. If they choose not to work, they can use sick time.
Sorry, didn't hear that.
Cafeteria workers, yes. If they choose to work. If they choose not to work, they can take sick time, and they would get paid. If they do not have any sick time, then no, they would not be paid. Bus drivers, they were given the choice at the beginning. We would find jobs for them if they chose to accept them. If they did not, they could take sick time, or they could go on unemployment.
Ms. Morgan, are you all set?
I know, because I think something happened. I don't know if it was just me, or everybody just froze on me. No. So just me?
I have a problem though.
Probably. I mean, I heard it. Everyone is pretty, like, you know, comfy. So, so do you need, do you need Dr. Shaverhood to repeat what she's just said?
I hate to ask, but yes.
Okay, and what was the question again?
Yeah, thanks.
It was about whether or not the other bus drivers and cafeteria workers are working, the ones, I mean, getting paid, the ones that aren't actually working.
If, if cafeteria workers would like to work, then yes, everyone is working. If they choose not to work, then they can use sick time, or they could use, if they have vacation time, they could use that, and if they choose not to, then they do not get paid. Bus drivers at the beginning of this were given an option. We would find a job for them to help us with. They could use their sick time, or they could go on unemployment. No one took us up on finding a position for them, and if they were able to bid into this job to drive, then yes, they're still getting paid. Other than that, no, they went on unemployment, and that's been from March.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll go back to, but Ms. Rossi, go ahead.
So how many drivers do we have in the district?
I believe we have a total of about, no, probably 30, maybe, and that's with subs. Maybe, probably about 22 regular.
So.
About a district. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
So we have 14 currently. We have 14 currently doing the bus runs. Were the other drivers allowed to sub out? Did you give them the option of alternating the bus routes for the lunch deliveries? Or were they first come, first served?
No, it's not first come, first served. It's according to seniority, and it's bid out. We follow the contract. It's contractual.
Ms. Rossi, so you're kind of frozen. I don't know, was he still with us?
I'm sorry, this has been happening all day to me.
You might need to come back in, like you did in the other meetings with your phone or something. I see you now. You were frozen for a good, I don't know, half minute there. No, it's not, you're not coming through. You want to come back in? No, it's not, you're not coming through. You, you want to come back in on your phone?
Everyone was frozen. Everyone was frozen.
Yeah, that happens when you're from freeze, I found out.
I'll try.
Okay, um, I, I didn't hear, I don't know about anyone else, but I didn't hear just about everything you said. I guess we'll, we'll come back to you. No, I can hear you. I can hear everybody except April, I think. So, while, while April's trying to figure that out, does anyone else have any comments or questions regarding this?
Could I ask you a question?
Yeah, Ms. Backyaki.
Um, I, I, you probably already said this, but I, I didn't hear you. Where did the funding come from for us to be able to do this?
It comes from the Summer Food Service Program, SFSP, and that comes from the state and feds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I'll just ask too, well, Ms. Spear, did you have a question?
Yeah, real quick. How many, so how many people, you said you offered everyone a position to work if they wanted? And the 14 were the ones who said yes?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
And, and, and I just, yeah, thank you for mentioning it was about $2,000 a week. And, and I just, I just have to ask, I mean, so I'm guessing, you know, that can be used for anything, you know, food service related. And, and I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, is there anything else that we should be concerned about as far as equipment or anything like that, that, that this should be going toward?
No, actually, I, you know, Mr. Russo has been just marvelous in getting grants. We've been able to replace some equipment through grant cost. And because of the money continuing to come in, we've been able to make some upgrades. So it, we are so grateful for the food service employees and our bus drivers for the job that they're doing, for coming every day, that this is the least we can do for them. And for our kids, you know, 80, 84,000 meals, that's incredible. That's 84,000 meals our kids would not have had, had not for the hard work of our food service and our bus drivers in delivering it. So I, you know, I am just grateful and I'm thankful for what they're doing.
Yeah, and I know you.
To approve this raise.
Yeah, and you, you mentioned it all the time whenever, whenever we have other discussions about other things. And I don't know if I mentioned it at a, at a previous school committee meeting. I, I wanted to go down and, you know, see them, you know, and say hi and thank you. And, and Dr. Shaverhood was like, oh, I don't, don't know if that's such a good idea because they're just slammed, they're just full tilt, you know? So, so, yeah, I, I, I really appreciate it and I, I, you know, just have, I was concerned about taking care of the capital equipment and gear was, you know, a priority, but you're saying that's pretty much well taken care of. So other than that, I, I would enthusiastically support this. But, um, do we need to do like an MOA or anything?
Um, well, once you approve this, then what we will do is just draft a little document up and have the two, the union sign it and then we'll have you sign it, Mr. Flaherty, that it will last only during the time we're doing the COVID-19 meals.
Now, now, should I say unions or union or does this all go on the cafeteria workers? Where basically the bus drivers are assisting the cafeteria workers?
Well, this is the one union. They're both in this, in the same union.
Absolutely, yeah, then, uh, thanks, thanks for clarifying that, okay. All right, any more questions or comments? Ms. Russ, are you back with us here? Ms. Ross, are you there? I'd really like to have Ms. Rossi in on the vote.
It's trying to come back in, I think.
Okay.
I think she went out to try to come back in.
Yeah, okay, wait a bit.
Can I ask a question while she's trying to come back in? So this, I just wanted to just clarify that the bus monitors also were offered a job during this time?
No.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge. Bus drivers.
Right. There she is.
Hey. Yeah, it says connecting to audio. You'll, you'll be, well, they will be hearing you soon. Think you might need to unmute. Ms. Rossi, it says, there you go. I think we can hear you now, just speak.
Yes.
I can, I can, I can hear you, but it's very faint.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys are very faint as well.
All right, yeah, a little bit, I think. Yeah, go for it. Do you have any more questions or comments? I can hear you, yes.
My only concern is that the cafeteria workers and the bus drivers are not the only ones that have been putting in the extra time and, and work for the COVID-19. I appreciate that they have been providing the meals and the support to so many families in town and I think that's absolutely vital, but so have the teachers. And I don't know that I would feel comfortable giving or accepting a raise for one group and not for another. I think it should be across the board if it's going to be for anything, regardless of where the money is coming from as a line item. I don't think it sets a good precedent to pick one group over another to, to give more money to as opposed to not giving it to the teachers or the paraprofessionals or the administrators who are also working overtime, working extended hours, going above and beyond, teaching their own kids at home, taking care of their own families while still teaching all the kids in our district and they're not getting any additional funding. I, I don't know that I see that it's right to give to one group more than another when everyone in our district is going above and beyond right now.
Yeah, yeah, I just wish, I wish the same opportunities were available, but this just is specific to this particular funding, this grant. I wish I could give them all more money, as you say. But, but that personally, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, to, to do it where I can and I can here, so.
I didn't understand that this was a grant.
I shouldn't say, I shouldn't say it was a grant. Anyway, it's not what Dr. Shaverhood said. Dr. Shaverhood, I'm sorry, it's, it's just additional funding from the reimbursements, I believe. From the, specifically from the meals.
I'm having a hard time understanding what that means.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
She, she's having a hard time understanding how the reimbursements were?
Yes, like how is this a reimbursement? Where is the funding coming from specifically as a reimbursement? Is it just for bus drivers and, and, you know, people that are dealing with COVID-19? Is this just for cafeteria workers? Is this coming from some sort of, I know that Mike used the word grant loosely, but is it some sort of grant? As you said, it's not coming from our specific budget, but I'm just trying to understand where this money is coming from and why it's only applied to such a small portion of those that are going above and beyond for the COVID-19.
Well, okay, so our food service is funded separately than from the LEA. And our food service, we get our money from the number of meals that we serve. So if, for instance, if we serve 10 meals, each meal, we might get a reimbursement from the DSC or from the feds for $2 a meal. So we would receive 10 times 2 and that would be our reimbursement, would be $20. So what happens when we, we serve all the meals, we get reimbursement and it's only applies to, it goes into the food service account. And because, and I cannot take, or could you take that money from food service and say, well, I want to give it to the paraprofessionals because the paraprofessionals don't have anything to do with the food service? What you could do is, because the bus drivers are assisting, they have, they're part of the responsibility of helping to distribute the meals. And so that's why we can pay extra money to the bus drivers during this time. If we would leave the money and, and not touch it, it would stay in food service. It cannot cross over to the LEA, so it would really just be sitting there. There are also, you know, some places giving the $2 hazard pay and for people that are kind of on, quote, the front lines. And I agree with each one of you that giving extra money to our teachers and our pairs would be a wonderful thing to do. We just don't have it. And I, I guess I also feel very grateful that we've been able to continue to pay our employees during this time. And we have every intention of doing so. And we know that our cafeteria people have come in 6 o'clock or earlier every day since this has started and prepared meals for our kids. And because we're getting more of a reimbursement because of the job we're doing, it seems the right thing to do is to provide additional money for them during this time because it really is above and beyond normal working conditions.
Does that answer your question, April?
Well, I mean, like I said, my concern a lot is that we only have essentially half of our bus drivers that would be benefiting from this and that those that were either, you know, almost like, you know, circumstantially forced to collect unemployment or, you know, seek kind of some sort of alternate work because of the, the virus and them not obviously being able to drive. I just, what happens to those employees? I just sort of feel that it's, I don't feel right benefiting, as much as I know that they're going above and beyond. It's, it's just sort of like, I feel bad for those that are not going to be able to benefit from this because they aren't able to either alternate routes with the bus, you know, why we didn't split it with seniority. I understand that some have been there a long time, but what, what designates seniority? You know, there are some people that may have been with the district 10 plus years that are still not senior enough to qualify to continue to help the district, whether they want to or not. And, you know, they're kind of, those people are going to be in a rock and a hard place. How are they going to feel knowing that their, their coworkers are now getting, you know, additional funding when they're getting nothing? I, I just don't know how, how that's going to reflect on the, on the remaining employees. I, I would rather have something that we could be able to do to benefit all of the people that are going above and beyond or displaced or, or, you know, struggling. I just have a hard time selecting a certain number of people to, you know, give this great, you know, kind of benefit to and then leaving everyone else in the dust. It just doesn't sit right with me.
Okay, Ms. Morgan, did you have something?
So I have two questions, or not questions, one statement is that, yeah, it bothers me because the bus monitors aren't even given a chance. And then two, can this money be used for something else or is it only designated for this?
There, I, I'm not sure what else it would be used for, Mrs. Morgan?
Like Ms. Morgan, like, and, and Dr. Shaverhood, I mean, I, I infer that it can only be used for food services. That's why I was asking about, you know, gear and, you know, stuff like that. But, but as Dr. Shaverhood made clear, I mean, it can't be used outside of BASH.
Nope.
No, so with the food services, could it be used something else within the food services then? Or is it just a COVID-19 thing where it's for people who are working during this time?
No, it's not a COVID-19 thing. It's only for food service.
Okay.
But, but I don't know what other expenses there would be that you would want to use for food service right now.
Right. Yeah, and I, and I think, do I infer correctly that, but due to COVID, the reimbursement is higher. We're getting more money. They're, they're bumping it up somehow.
It is true.
So does it have to be? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mary, go ahead.
Does it have to be used by a certain time period?
No.
Could I ask you a question?
Yep.
And, and I think, Dr. Shaverhood, I think you kind of nailed it too with, with, yeah, this being the frontline, you know? I mean, we're getting some, some, you know, COVID, you know, COVID money, you know, additional money due to COVID. And, and these, these, of all the staff, this is probably the most on the frontline, I would think, dealing with the public and giving out thousands of meals. Yeah, I mean, I feel even better about it, honestly. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion to, oh, see, Ms. Spear, go ahead.
Lauren has her hand up.
Thank you. No, I just, I want to say, I mean, these people didn't have to stay. I mean, we couldn't, that's a lot of meals, 84,000 meals. That takes a lot of organization and a lot of work to feed that many kids. And if we can give them $2, I think that sounds great.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
That's, Ms. Spear motion, second?
Second.
Is that Ms. Backyaki's second? Yeah, we'll do a roll call. Ms. Rossi?
I abstain.
Okay, Ms. Spear?
Yes.
Ms. Backyaki?
Yes.
And Ms. Morgan?
I'm only going to say no because I really truly feel that the bus monitors should have had some sort of auction to help. Instead of having two bus drivers, I really feel they should have been a bus driver in a monitor. That's the reason I'm saying no.
Okay, so myself, yes. So that's, that's 311 passes. Thank you for that. And, and also just want to remind folks, I mean, it is fine that we had this discussion here, but you can, you feel free, if you have like a lot of questions like this, to call Dr. Shaverhood or, 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 you know, email, I'm sorry, email Dr. Shaverhood or, or, you know, whoever and, and get answers to your questions if you have a lot before the meeting or, or not. It's just a suggestion. We're on to acceptance of gifts. Is that Dr. Shaverhood?
Yes, yes. So I would ask that you would accept the following gifts. $2 from your cause to the high school on behalf of an ATE employee. $5.70 from Box Top Education to Minnetonka Forest PTA. $8.60 from Box Top Education to the middle school. $4.60 to Wareham Public Schools. And $6.20 from Box Tops to the high school. These funds were from November 2nd to These funds were from November second to March second. I would ask the committee to please accept the gifts.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
That's Ms. Rossi, second.
Second.
Ms. Becky Yaki, seconds. Any further discussion or questions? I just want to say thank you and and even, you know, frankly, even when they're when when they're smaller, I I kind of appreciate it even more for some some reason. Said, I like, I love that, you know, someone even thinks that that much that much makes a difference, you know? So so I appreciate that. And we have a motion in seconds. So I'll do a roll call. I'll do Ms. Spear.
Yes.
Ms. Becky Yaki?
Yes.
Ms. Rossi?
Yes.
And Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous five zero zero. And I apologize, I should I should have circled back to Ms. Fay. Are you with us now? Do we have audio? Give it a go. Oh, shoot. Okay, well, it's just it's just not going to happen tonight. I'm so sorry. But I'd be totally, you know, happy to have you on the on the agenda the next the next meeting because we really need to hear about it. And I was looking forward to it when I saw it. But I know you I know you had a long day. Dr. Shaverhood kind of filled us in, so they take care, okay? And and we'll see you next week or next next meeting. All right, and so on to the report of the superintendent.
Yes, thank you. All right, so first you have the bill and the payroll warrants. I would ask for your approval. I would add one in on May fourteenth, two thousand twenty, in the amount of eighty one thousand, one hundred twenty four dollars and twenty six cents. I'd ask you to please approve the ones listed plus the one that I just shared.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
So moved.
And so I see Ms. Rossi and moved and Ms. Becky Yaki, is that second?
Yes.
Okay, so without any further discussion, seeing none, I'll do a roll call. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And Ms. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Spear?
Yes.
Ms. Becky Yaki?
Yes.
Myself, yes, passes five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so normally, this is our meeting where we recognize our staff for either the years of service or retirees. And since this is a Zoom meeting, it seemed more appropriate to invite our staff that we would like to recognize to attend our first face to face meeting once we get back. And so that's what we're going to do. However, what I would like to do is to recognize our teachers and pairs that are retiring. And so I have a short little piece to read about each one of them and to thank them for their years of service. So from the high school, we have Susan Nobrega. She's a high school. She was a teacher for over twenty five years in the business department. She was instrumental in building the DECA program at the high school, which was what which is one of the best programs in the state. She's an excellent teacher of technology and business. She was like everyone's mother in the classroom, and even some of the students called her ma. Her lessons were well planned, very organized, and she would always go the extra mile for the students at the high school. The next staff person retiring from the high school is Lynn Sykes. Mrs. Sykes is a teacher of the high school for over twenty years in the special education department. She started working in Wareham over forty years ago. She left the state for a while and then came back in two thousand. She taught just about everything in special education they had to offer from small groups to inclusion to inclusion. She always puts the time in to create dynamic lessons and to help her students out. It was not unusual to have the custodians chase her out at night. So she's also known to celebrate every one of her students' milestones. And this would also involve with her purchasing something from them with her own money. From the middle school, Cindy Bliss. She's been a dedicated educator for thirty years. She's worked from kindergarten to grade eight, teaching classes in all subject areas. The middle school has been her home for twenty seven years. She shared her love of reading and writing, as well as her knowledge of history with so many of our students. Janice Barton. Janice has been an educator at Wareham Middle School for eight years. She was instrumental in developing our STEAM program. She's an innovative thinker that motivates and engages her students in technology and design. At Degas, Jackie Koval. She's diligently she's diligently served our district for over twenty three years. She served as an instructional paraprofessional, prayer professional, and ASD paraprofessional and a learning center. She'll be remembered for her constant smile and her caring demeanor. We appreciate her service and wish wish her much happiness. At Minnet, Lynn Dunn is a pair professional at Minnet Forest. She's worked in several classrooms with students in small groups. She's a great support to teachers and willing to help wherever's needed. She completes several duties during the day, and she's known for her festive outfits. She enjoys dressing up for holidays and special events. During the online learning, she's enjoyed recording herself reading chapters from Charlotte Web for students to watch. And finally, Elaine St. Clair. Mrs. St. Clair was a special is a special education teacher at Minnet, and then she's a team chair. She's been very organized with all the paperwork and deadlines. She keeps IP meetings running efficiently and as positive as possible. She's instrumental in getting the required list of students and the accommodations needed for MCAS planning and testing. She, anytime someone needs a report, she's quick to get the information, and she always makes sure the reports are on time. Her retirement is well deserved, but she will be missed tremendously. So, you know, certainly, as was mentioned, this is Educators Appreciation Week. We appreciate everything that our teachers and paraprofessionals have done, and we wish them very well in the future. And we hope that they will join us when we're able to gather face to face and we can do a proper thanking for all of their years of service.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Schwann. That's not just Dr. Shaverhood, I'm sorry. For doing that, I I I wasn't sure how we were going to do that. But now, who was the first educator you mentioned, the one that was instrumental with DECA?
Susan Nobrega.
Oh, okay, I just didn't hear it. Very good. Anyone, anyone have any comments or anything about that? Seeing none, I know that Ms. Becky Yaki. Yeah.
I just want to say thank you, like you said to Dr. Shaverhood for, oh. No, I'm not muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, it's just delayed.
Oh, okay.
I can't hear you.
I just want to say thank you for for doing for doing that. And I look forward to being able to recognize them in person. There's a lot of experience and dedication in that list, and and they will surely be missed, but very deserving of retirement.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And anyone else? Okay, seeing none. No, no, thank you very much. Anything else under the under the superintendent's report?
Yes, I do. I just want to update you on what's been going on in our schools since we started our online morning. As you know, the daily lessons check in. But the amazing efforts of our faculty and staff, it just, every day, there's something new, from dropping off supplies at students' homes to creating games for kids to play, or even our faculty and and staff to, you know, keep up our camaraderie. It's just simply amazing. And we would be amiss if we didn't thank everyone for their efforts and their hard work. Also, our bus drivers, pairs, and some teachers have been spending time making masks that we've been distributing to our senior citizens in town, as well as our students at different stops. And so if there are any families out there that are lacking in mask, if you would let us know, we will have a number of them ready to distribute, and we will continue to distribute them until everybody has one. And it's through their efforts, and they've they've just taken this on and it's gone without a hitch. So we're very appreciative for that. Unfortunately, though, we then come to the budget. And right now, we're really waiting to see what happens with the town revenue for next year and where we're going to come in at as far as our budget number. It's quite likely that it's going to be coming back to you for a revote. As difficult as it was for us to get to our number that we voted upon, I'm afraid that we're going to have to vote a lower number. And we're waiting to hear what that would possibly be. We are standing with the town as far as asking our unions to take a zero raise for next year, zero percent. And the administrators, principals, and directors have all agreed that we will hold on what they're being paid this year because it's our priority to keep as many staff as possible. So we're continuing to wait for information and from the governor and Desi about what the revenue will be. And until then, we continue to try to prepare as much as we can. We do understand that there will be some money possibly coming to us that can help offset some of the costs. We're expecting to hear that number sometime. Well, we were told this week, so hopefully we'll hear it tomorrow. And when that comes, that will help us with our planning a little bit more. We still do not know when schools will reopen. However, plans are in process for summer school. We do not know when or how that will happen. And as soon as we have more information, we certainly will be sharing it with people. But we're making various contingencies so we can be ready whenever we whenever we know what it will be. So if you have questions, happy to answer them if I can. And if not, thank you very much.
Anyone? Oh, Ms. Becky Yaki?
Well, I have a question, but I just wanted to. Can you hear me?
I can. It's just delayed. I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to echo what Dr. Shaverhood said about being Teacher Appreciation Week. You know, we're appreciative all the time of everything that they do during this crisis and during regular school days. So I would just echo that. And I would say, I said this earlier, that I was really taken aback when I heard that the principals and the directors had all agreed to a zero percent raise. I just think it's a true sign of leadership and, you know, and I appreciate what they've done.
Right, and Dr. Shaverhood, remind me, so the 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 principals and administrators, right, they have right now contractually raises in their contracts, right?
Well, every year we negotiate, we negotiate depending on, you know, performance and meaning of goals. So yes, it's a given that they would have received some because they're all doing such a fabulous job.
Yeah, yeah. And and yeah, I I share Ms. Becky Yaki's taken aback in this. It was, they 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 really stepped up stepped up and I believe unsolicited, right? Is that true, Dr. Shaverhood?
Yeah, we were talking about it and and, you know, the town contacted us as they are doing the same and asked that we would come, you know, we would be with them, and we said yes, and everyone volunteered.
Yeah, and and it is. It's it's all about keeping staff. It's all trying to keep as much as we can, you know, and 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 nobody, you know, you don't join the school, you're looking to give anyone zero percent raises, you know, but but these 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 are what the times are demanding, because, I mean, to to for every for every dollar you need to, if you did a raise, you'd have to find somewhere to cut it, and I'm not ready to cut staff. But we'll see how that goes.
Yeah.
Anyone, anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for that report, Dr. Shaverhood. Report of the school committee, school building committee. Ms. Becky Yaki, it was nice enough to want to take this one on and give an update on what's going on with the new building, the new elementary school. And she's going to try to share.
I'll try. I can't promise anything, but I'll try. Hold on. Did it work?
Yeah, it's working great.
Okay, so I'm not going to go through the presentation because I certainly couldn't do as good a job as as they do at a building committee meeting. But I would just say that I had asked Mike that we share these presentations with the school committee. They are shared online, the building, the project manager has a Facebook page that they update all the time. And so these these presentations are are shared on there. But I just thought that it was very important that they get shared with the school committee. So I think going forward, we will do this whenever there's a building committee meeting and there's an update to share, that we will certainly share it. If anybody has any questions, I would try to answer them. I certainly will be happy to bring any questions back to the building committee. I think we have another meeting in a couple of weeks. Always happy to do that. The one of the biggest pieces that came out of our most recent meeting was the creation of a public relations committee that will be chaired by building committee member Rhonda Bugan, who does a great job with this. They've already started consolidating the social media, getting getting ready to get the word out. Similar to what was done when we were leading up to the vote for the approval of the school. And so now they'll just shift their focus and, you know, more of a public education and make sure that everyone in town who voted for the new school, you know, will get to see the progress as it begins, because construction, you know, work at the site has begun. So thank you, Mike, for including us. And I think it's important that we talk about it at the school committee meeting as well as building committee.
Yeah, and and the cool thing with those meetings, kind of like this one, is they are open to the public. I mean, they're streamed lives. You can just, you know, zoom in like this and listen and watch if you want.
Right.
Lots, lots of great information there. And and I've always, I've always really liked the committee itself. It's been such a great committee, a great cross section of the community between just, you know, staff and the various committees and parents and community stakeholders and everybody. It's it's great.
Everyone has their own unique vision to share.
Yeah, yeah, and there are all their backgrounds and perspectives and 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 it's really shows. I mean, it when the it really was part of the reason why it got approved in the first place, that all that buy in from such a broad, a broad cross section of the community. Yeah, and and yeah, so if you drive by it, it's it's really, I mean, it's really kind of starting, you can see it kind of starting to take shape over there. And I think I think they will be seeing some drone footage soon at some point, too. That that'd be great, you know?
I know WCTV is working on on that. Yeah.
Yeah. You know, and and, you know, we had all sorts of groundbreaking ceremonies planned, but but those had to get on hold because of the whole COVID thing. But at some point, you know, yeah, we'll all be doing that.
True. That's something I think the public relations committee will work on.
Yeah, yeah. So with that, is any any questions for Joyce Wright on this? You know what, I actually, Joyce, can you unshare? Because I only see like three people in this view.
I'm happy to. How's that?
All right, now I can see everybody again. So does anybody have any questions or comments or anything? I've seen, seen none. Okay. With that, anyway, oh, any anymore? With that, anyway, oh, any, any more school committee business or reports? Seeing that, I had a question. So, I mean, I mean, yeah, yeah, it's, oh, Miss Rossi, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that this is Nurses Week and just wanted to thank all of our school nurses for all of the work that they do and everything that they've been doing to help everybody during this time as well.
Yeah, thank you for that. Absolutely. Anyone else? All right, I was going to say, you know, so, so, yeah, the whole COVID thing's going on and things aren't the same. But I guess I probably asked Miss Ruiz this, is there anything that we should be doing, continuing with policy review? Are there any policies we should be, you know, still, should the policy review committee still meet even through Zoom?
As far as I know, we've already finished for the year. We're not going to start until the fall unless something comes up between now and then.
Okay, all right, I just didn't want that to fall off any plate or anything, but it sounds like we're in good shape on that. And I guess, I guess that's, that's all I have for that. Any other business? Anyone want to bring up any other business? Dr. Schwann, you've been real quiet tonight. Anything going on? I guess not.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit going on, but it's all just in preparation. You know, we're looking at this year, but also prepping wildly for next year. So there's a lot going on in that department. And I'm also concerned about the budget and trying to save people and looking at how, you know, what it is that we have to do to manipulate the funds to make sure that we, you know, the goal priority is to keep as many people in front of children as we possibly can. So we're looking and searching, but we also know that we're on a mission to improve the educational lives of all of our children. And we, that mission has been steadfast for six years. And so there's, we're, and because we're in a good place, we can, we can look at different ways to also maintain a high-quality service as much as possible under these stressful times. So we're just really carefully looking and talking to, you know, obviously collaborating with everyone. And I think that the collaboration and community that's happened is by far some of the most fantastic that we've ever seen. We just gave the professional staff survey as well. So that's the survey we give every year, and you guys will get the results of that. And if you, you know, when I want to feel good, I read, come down, just, you know, open up that survey because it's quite amazing, the commentary and the positive feedback that we've received from staff. And it's just, it's very warming, and it makes you feel like you're, you haven't done all of this and given your life for not. You know what I mean? So things are.
Is all that commentary, oh, I'm sorry. Is all that, is all that commentary anonymous?
Yes.
Is that something that could be shared with the committee?
I always share it with the committee every year. You get, you get copies of it every single year.
Yeah, the the comments?
Uh, not necessarily the comments, but I can definitely share them.
Yeah, that'd be.
I, I share them definitely with the principals and the leadership team, and we look at them. But when I'm reporting out, it becomes very long, you know, like it, it's sort of like looking at the strategic and planning with all of that information. It's about eighty pages you guys get every year. So, you know, you try to make it tight and clean. But yes, I'll be happy to share some of those comments.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, no problem.
Great. Any other business? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. We're all moved.
If she, Miss Rossi, moved, who who seconded?
Second.
Miss Morgan, seconds. Roll call. Miss Backyaki?
Yes.
Miss Spear?
Yes.
Miss Rossi?
Yes.
Miss Morgan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.